Sorry about that, I just want to make sure it's clear.
Um, I'd like to move to introduce an ordinance authorized in the city of the sublease upstairs offices located at eight oh two Main Avenue, Lucky Services, L C, the Robert Frost case for Forbes College, and then the brand of business.
One second, do you have any question?
Um, Assistant Attorney's Office rightfully said I can give you a little bit of background or I can state some questions. To give you a little background, um, as is very apparent, uh, the city of Durango is merging services with the previously provided by Visit Durango, each and see. As a part of that, um, we are taking leases that the city of Visit Durango had with a property owner in the city of Durango. All leases have to be done by ordinance. This is an introduction of ordinance that allows the city to take over leases previously held by Visit Durango with proceeds that are listed there.
Thank you very much. The first question, I have three questions, was to answer three. On the summary of the agenda, gives you an introduction of ordinance, on the agenda documentation, says the ordinance and recommended to consider the ordinance. So, I think your answer to the question is an introduction, so suggest maybe for the actual agenda package to recall that as an introduction. Um, my first question is, um, I understand that the city manager and the city attorney and a select number of their staff have left the city hall location and currently have their offices in this welcome center area. How many offices, uh?
I think that's odd, or if that's getting a little bit larger than what this, um, eight point six point one is, is just a really healthy schedule release.
I I am having a question on a recent night, wanting to ask the question before I consider supporting the introduction of that ordinance. This is exactly about this, this ordinance and lease, I I cannot see how it's not directly related.
I think it's more on Mark, it just depends on where the line between an introduction of the ordinance and actually discussing the merits of the ordinance. The introduction of the ordinance, as I recall, is just to say whether or not the ordinance should be introduced. The merits of what that ordinance is comes on first consideration, if I'm correct, Mark.
There you are. I mean, the charter is pretty clear. Um, it's all for the benefit of the public. The idea here is just that there is a time period between when business is introduced and the public that has noticed that it's coming and then they can consider it, research it, and then they can participate when it's discussed and debated by the council at the next meeting. So, we're at the step that under the charter, we're just introducing the ordinance and the threshold for moving it forward is this low. So, it's up to you guys as a council, how much discussion you want to have at introduction, but the reality is for the public, you do not want to have extensive discussion at introduction because they have no idea what you're talking about. Um, you need to give them the time to absorb the business that will come for the council mutually considering at the next meeting.
I am, I would like to clarify, the offices here, there is an introduction being introduced. I have questions on introduction being introduced that may create changes to the introduction of that ordinance, the actual language of introduction. The in, the ordinance itself is already in the agenda, so if the public wants to see it come up out of future time, which will happen, they will have the same ordinance, and I am comfortable making a couple of questions right now that determine if I support the introduction, if this ordinance is on.
Answering any question you might have.
Okay.
It's up to your colleagues to sort of make decides appropriate for this.
At this point, we're just introducing the ordinance. It's going to be up for discussion at the next presentation.
So, why is it even an agenda? I mean, can you support or ask a question on the actual ordinance that's being introduced? I mean, how, how, how does that?
Can you explain how the introduction of the ordinance works, please? Can you explain how the introduction of ordinance works?
Yeah, so again, we're municipal, um, the whole charter is about, we have a charter. Our charter lays out very specific directions on how you are to process ordinances. And the idea is that, and a lot of this comes from the, this is a variable charter, it hasn't been amended, but before we had internet computers, we could just look at things across the board. The whole idea was to give the public an opportunity to know what business was coming before it actually got discussed. Um, and that's the reason there's an introduction required before there is a consideration. And consideration is usually the time for debate and the questions. To Counselor Bosman's point, he does have the right to vote against introducing something, um, and he is certainly entitled to ask questions about that. But there is, there's a gray area in there, is what's too much and what's too little when it comes to considering what is introduced. So, it seems that Counselor Bosman just has a difference of opinion, but that's, that's, that's between you guys. That's how much discussion you allow introduction. Any special question?
Well, you know, we've been working out following procedures, and basically when we do an introduction, we just say that we're going to need to work with this. Then when it comes up for consideration, that's when we do the discussion, because in the meantime, this will get published. The public will have time to review the policies, and then we'll all come back for the next meeting and have questions and discussions.
And I guess the one point that I've left out, there is nothing that happens in introduction that can affect the public. You cannot take any final action at introduction. Um, so again, it's the introducing it to the public, giving them a chance to digest what's coming, and you can't take any official action on it until you've actually considered it, which happens at the next meeting.
So, what we're doing instead of, we're going to move forward with this, maybe, and that's what I think we should do, have a vote on moving forward with this, uh, let's say, eight point six point one. Do we have a vote?
Ambassador Nancy?
Yes.
Councilor Yussuf?
Yes.
Councilor Vindrich?
Yes.
Councilor Bydman?
Um, in case I'm not being well informed, I was informed that I should vote no, so I don't have to vote no.
Then the poll was eight point six point two, an introduction of an ordinance pending in private park, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council by pending, Section Two, dash nineteen, Rules of Procedure, Part B, Section Seven, submitted by Counselor Yussuf. This was called by Counselor Bosman.
I'd like to move to introduce an ordinance pending in private park, the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, City Council by pending, Section Two dash nineteen, Rules of Procedure, Part B, Section Seven.
Second. Uh, since I brought it up, uh, since I brought that ordinance forward, I will just do a quick, uh, introduction. And this two is for the benefit of the public, it's public notice, um, I think it's important for transparency, accountability, and fairness for the public and the community. The community, I believe, has a right to know if any council is seeking a variance, um, on private property that they own and or have a private interest in. And also, they have a right to know if the community, if, if a counselor is seeking public funds for that, uh, public piece of property. Uh, so the community is aware of any variances being sought, any public funds being, uh, granted, um, so that they can understand the impact on surrounding, uh, properties, uh, and also ensure that it's open and transparent and accountable as representatives, uh, to our constituents. That's what I brought up. For consideration at the next meeting.
I have questions, so, never mind, um, do you mind, this is an introduction as well, so I'll follow the procedure.
Counselor Bosman?
Uh, yes, please, yes.
Hey, I will. Counselor Vindrich?
Yes.
Ambassador Nancy?
Yes.
Counselor Yussuf?
Yes.
Ambassador Nancy, the agenda is ten point one, a public hearing regarding an ordinance issued as an A two on East Twelfth Street, historic high school, has a historic landmark.
Different presentation.
But in the meantime, I can introduce us. Good evening, Mayor O'Pam, and Council Daniel Murray, Judy Palman Department. I'm joined this evening by Savannah Lytle, who will be presenting, uh, on our behalf as an expert in all things historic preservation, and Mary beside her, Roger.
Uh, thank you, Daniel, good evening, Council, I'm excited to be here. Um, Savannah Lytle, without engineering and surveying, I'm excited and honored this evening to present the designation of two zero one, East Twelfth Street, Historic Durango High School. Um, as mentioned, this is the Durango Historic High School, and this is the designation, Durango's Register of Historic Places. And we're very familiar with this location, but it sits on a knoll above Buckley Park. It is, and was originally kind of considered the civic center of Durango in that here was the high school, Historic Durango High School. The Emory Smiley Junior High was behind it, across the street was the Trinity Library. Um, it is adjacent to the East Third Avenue Historic District, and down to the southwest is the beginning of the Main Avenue National Register Historic District. This building is located in the downtown Overlake District, and as such, any exterior changes are reviewed for compliance with the downtown historic, or downtown design guidelines. The designation of this building to the Durango Historic Places will not change any of the review permitting processes for this building, nor will it change any review processes for the surrounding buildings, including those designated, um, on historic registers. It also will not change their eligibility for state tax or federal tax credits for historic preservation, or their eligibility to receive grants. I want to point out that two of the buildings are not included. This is the, um, secondary school that was constructed in the nineteen fifties that the current community development and engineering departments are located in, nor is the small boiler building to the north. Neither of these are included in the designation. I did want to point out, to the rear of the building is a swimming pool addition that was constructed ten years after the high school. This was designed by Eugene Grove, a very prominent architect in the state of Colorado. However, this is a not even significant network piece of his architecture, and it has been significantly altered. There has been proposals for the demolition of this addition. This demolition would be reviewed and decided upon by the historic preservation board. Staff is recommending approval of this demolition as it's not significant piece of Eugene Grove's work, nor as it retains its integrity. Quick timeline, this building was designed and constructed in nineteen sixteen seventeen. Uh, as mentioned, that swimming pool was added ten years later. Um, the nineteen fifty seven secondary school was completed, that is not part of this designation. In nineteen seventy seven, the high school moves out of the building. This building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, as well as the State Register of Historic Places. It has received the Colorado State Historic Fund grant for window restoration, and in nineteen, in twenty twenty three, City of Durango purchases this building. This is, its owner initiated designation and with owner's support. Same in its significance, for a building to be designated on the Durango Register of Historic Places, it needs to be fifty years or older. It also needs to be one of the criteria in three categories, history, geography, architecture, and it also has to retain its integrity. This building has been found to meet not only one criteria, but some of the criteria as outlined in the Land Development Code. The first one is architectural, and it means architectural style. This is a neoclassical style, a very common style for schools at the turn of the last centuries. It was thought to exude order and formality and symmetry, that was, uh, part of education. Um, and not only is building so grand, but its architectural details, it has the neoclassical style. It's a recognized architect, it is Thomas McLaren and Charles Thomas, architects out of Colorado Springs that designed this. This was their last work together. Um, Charles, uh, Thomas went on to design the Smiley Building, and Tom, or, and Thomas McLaren went on to design the Halls Lodge. I don't think I can say it better than whenever I heard historic preservation board members Karen and Nisi said, this is a huge cultural heritage of our community. This was our high school for six, or the building for our high school for sixty years. Um, so it has touched multiple lives. There's probably people listening to this right now that want these halls from a part of the culture, um, that this building supports. And then the last criteria is a visual feature of the community. This is a landmark, and you know where you are when you see this building. Um, at the terminus of second and above Buckley Park, it is a very strong visual feature. All buildings once they have been determined in the criteria are analyzed for whether or not they have an integrity. That is, does it still have its character defining features that, uh, meet this criteria, and this one very strongly does. It has little to no exterior alteration, um, so it does retain that integrity, the interior has been modified, um, a little bit more. Finding some recommendation of the motion, historic preservation board reviewed this at their meeting and unanimously recommended approval. We propose landmark designation with the following findings, so the exact least fifty years or older, it has maintained its integrity, and the building meets the designation criteria as outlined in the Land Development Code, meeting criteria A of the N C. So, recommended motion is to move to open a public hearing to consider an ordinance designating two zero one, East Twelfth Street, Historic Durango High School, to the Durango Register of Historic Places.
I move to open a public hearing to consider an ordinance designating two oh one, East Twelfth Street, Historic Durango High School, to the Durango Register of Historic Places.
One second.
Next question? Counselor Yussuf?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Vindrich?
Yes.
Ambassador Nancy?
Yes.
You just asked if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this side.
Uh, who's eleven? Is there anybody who would like to speak on public hearing concerning historic res- uh, designation of Durango by our building?
Hello. My name is Sweetie Marbury, and I'm a Durango resident. What a fabulous, fabulous idea. I look forward to this. I've lived here fifty years. That building is a landmark in Durango. We all are proud of it. Many of us know people who graduated from Durango High School. I look at Historic Durango High School as a compliment that will go forward. It's a legacy for my grandchildren. I think it's a marvelous idea. I support what Karen and Nisi had to say, and certainly what Savannah has presented to us. I also support the two A, which would mean our city and our police department would be moving out of this building and the old worn-out police department, and it would be a grand legacy for all of you who sit and enjoy it. Thank you.
Anybody else for, uh, public comment?
No one else has signed a form?
We're gonna close the public hearing.
In a time? Uh, next time is eleven point one, uh, resolution, R, two thousand twenty five zero zero nineteen. A public censure and public re- recommend of Counselor Bosman's for acting in a manner unbecoming or irregular. Bringing this review to the Durango City Council, issuing a letter of apology to the Assistant City Manager and Chief of Police, uh, submitted by Counsel, uh, Bureau Director Nancy.
So, resolution needs a motion, second?
Yes. I make a motion to accept resolution, one, two zero two five zero zero one nine, a public censure and public recommend of Counselor Bosman's. For acting in a manner unbecoming of Counselor, bringing this review to the Durango City Council, issuing a letter of apology to the Assistant City Manager and Chief of Police.
Maybe, I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion, please.
Please, second.
Oh, you can ask it, okay.
Just give him second and an amendment.
Okay.
Second. May I make a minute, please?
Um, I'd like to please remove from the resolution the statement, Counselor Judy Rosman's is here after ineligible as service mayor, Mayor Potem. Any leadership position on the council, any representative position of the council and or any subcommittee on the council.
All right, I accept that for any motion.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Um, I think it's important for all city councils to retain the ability to engage our community through various forms, such as being mayor, Mayor Potem, and Board of the Commission's ordinance. Additionally, we have at least one new city council coming on board in about a month, and they should be all also a part of these conversations around appointments and positions help. I think this is potentially a step too far, and I think it goes against the public interest.
Take it on hand.
Go ahead.
Well, it's yours, it's your, uh, agenda, I'm not sure if we should speak first.
Go ahead.
You want to speak, you want to? Okay, I'm, uh, first of all, I want to reconfirm everything that I said during that meeting. It's true and correct, and I really hope that anybody interested will listen to that meeting. It will show you the level of dishonesty, false information, and unethical behavior by some of the other people in our government. Unfortunately, I need to address the dishonesty taken place. It weighs heavy on my shoulders. As a counselor, I'm putting myself out there by choice, knowing that, you know, not only expose myself, no matter how ridiculous this ordinance is, but I have three children, and when they apply after, to a job after college, and a lawyer Googles their name, they will think I'm, it's a criminal family because of all the lies and information that is taking place right now in this century. I cannot accept this, and I have no choice but to take action depending on how this develops. So, what is this century about? I stand by my statements, which in summary are that I think we should never have had friction within the company and started that litigation, that the proposed solution for jail services is not a long-term solution, uh, and that part of the executive session was not recorded, and it shouldn't have been recorded. And I later clarified that a large part was spoken by the city manager, Assistant City Manager, Police Chief during the non-recorded part of the meeting. There are two items that are important here. The first, I said that a large part was spoken by these individuals. That is not a lie. They spoke for a large part during the non-recorded part of the executive session. It is Major, Jen Mayor Jessica Bule, who actually made a false statement, saying that I said that they spoke for a large majority, and then she went off repeating this large majority liar, I mean, how is that, a large majority barrage of insults? Well, I did not say it's a large majority. I really don't care what much value, if, if they spoke for ten or fifteen minutes out of the thirty-five minutes or so, it's a large part. Same as a large part of our residents in the county are Native American, not a majority, and that's not what I said. A large part of the women in the U S get exposed to some sort of sexual harassment, not saying it's a majority. The second issue is that they believe that I alleged or insinuated, insinuated that there were violations because the police, police chief, assistant city manager, the city manager spoke during the executive session. I never alleged that. I didn't, Thomas, even now I don't speak that. The issue I voiced is that this meeting was not recorded, and it should have been recorded, especially since other people decide the city attorney spoke, and it should have been recorded. There are, these are two very different issues, speaking during the executive session, which is a lot more flexible, as if it stays within the scope, versus not recording an executive session. Um, I have no issues with the police, what the police chief or the assistant manager said, if anything, I'm bothered with what the city manager said. And I still not alleging that that was a violation. But an executive session recording may only be stopped under specific circumstances, and the recording was stopped by Mayor Bule and recommended by the city attorney. To explain this with anybody here, uh, regular city council, regular meetings are and must be recorded, and they are available to the public. Executive sessions are somewhat different, they are closed meetings that must be recorded, and only under specific circumstances may the recording be stopped. And I emphasize, may be stopped, it is not required, it may be under specific circumstances being stopped. And the recording is not available to the public only if there's a challenge, and certain people, like a judge, listen to the recording and determine if there's any action. My statements during that meeting, they are that I think the recording should not have stopped, and my concern is that those circumstances, specific circumstances during the recording may have not been met because we have been stopped. Um, I'm gonna jump to the next one. This, um, this actually, we're going to use the actual resolution, the language of the century.
You have thirty seconds.
It is filled with falsehoods and violations of our charter and code of ordinance. In specific, it is in violation of, uh, new sections of Chapter Two, Article Roman seven, number seven of our code of ordinance as well, and I'll be very specific in this one, it is in violation of Chapter Two, Article Roman two, Section two hyphen nineteen B, Article Roman six, first bullet point. This resolution should be dismissed immediately. Any, anyone voting in favor, having been informed here, I want to finish my sentence first.
You have time, sir.
Okay.
But I think normally here, and the reason why I think this resolution is worthy is the fact that as a city in Durango, we are very cautious with our employees. And what had happened after the last meeting was that, um, Counselor Bosman accused our city manager, Assistant City Manager, Police Chief, and our attorney of lying.
Point of order, I did not say that. I can make a point of order, I did not state that, and you are lying.
And the reason this is relevant right now is the fact that through those actions, he created a hostile workplace for our employees. And as a city council, we're responsible for the actions of our city council, and also to make sure that our staff feels, uh, confident and secure coming to work, that they're not being, uh, they're not facing a hostile workplace. So, that's one reason. The second reason is when we go into executive sessions, normally they are to discuss, and always they're to discuss pertinent information that the councilors are going to make decisions on. And when we go ahead and get strategy and information from our attorney, would you should turn the deep corners off because that's not, uh, well, I think you can explain that better, I think, before I say something wrong. Richard Mark?
Sure. Um, I did provide much of the council today about the specific statutes that allow executive sessions to take place. The fact that they're required to be recorded and that there's a special exception for stopping or recording when the attorney recommends it be stopped because he's giving the advice. Um, my suggestion at this point, considering the comments that have been made today, is that you make that memorandum part of the minutes, and that you make the affidavits that I mentioned at the last meeting, who provided to you tonight, uh, part of the minutes. That way, sworn affidavits about what happened are in the record, they're in the minutes, they're subject to anyone looking at them if they choose to, and by my own explaining rules. Would you guys say up here, you know, that you say what you say, would be attached to, not, this is a record, but having officials sworn affidavits put to the record by our commission as well?
All right, so let's submit this sworn affidavit, affidavits by our four employees, and, um, the affidavit that you wrote about, the number you wrote about your subject sessions at the attitude minutes. Okay, so at this point, you have no discussion on this?
I will take my next three minutes to respond to what's said.
We're seeing a way to, we're really going.
Why do I get two?
It takes three minutes.
I should go.
All right, so I have explained exactly what violations are taking place in this resolution, in this century, and the way it's been brought forward. Any counselor that willingly and nobly votes in favor of this resolution intentionally violates our laws and codes and ordinances, I want to make very clear because there will be consequences. be consequences on that. And the other thing I will say, what is really going on? There's a recording, there's transcripts, and the century is filled with lies, we even call again something that is not true, aggressive language, idiocy, and so on. On the surface, to me, it's obviously influencing the election, but it's so full of dishonesty and extreme aggressive language to the extent that it's certain there will be a reaction from me. There's, there's gonna be more fishing, more discussion, this is going statewide, discussion on us working together in the year conference. But the real issue is not the century, that is the distraction from the city's attorney's actions. And maybe the issue that we have could be the friction with the county. If the city attorney recommend, recommend draft a strong word like letters, restraining order lost, it's gonna be lost. That is embarrassing, a lot of wasted time and money, taxpayers' money. In my opinion, what is probably the real issue at this point, seeing the aggressive way that this is being brought forward, is that the executive session recording was stopped, recommended by the city attorney, and we have completely disstracted away from that. I feel at this point absolutely convinced that the fact that this executive session recording was stopped is in violation of Colorado open meeting laws and Cora, and that would be a very serious violation that I believe should be investigated further so that council is well informed by not the attorney. And our city's attorney, Mark Morgan, certainly cannot at this point be objective or unbiased, given that his party is not fully responsible for the century language and for these potential order and Cora violations.
I guess I will just add that, in my opinion, the real issue, Councilor Rosman, is the century. This is the second time as a council that we've had to bring admonishment of your actions in a public setting. This is the second time. You're stating violations of an executive session. All four city councillors that were present in that room disagreed with you. Our city manager disagreed with you. Our city attorney disagreed with you. Our Chief of Police disagreed with you, and our Assistant City Manager disagreed with you. Every individual in the room disagreed with you. You're stating that there's dishonesty. There's eight individuals who sat in that room that disagree with you and that feel that what you are bringing forward is untrue. And that was what was trying to be brought forth in the last meeting, the statements that people were making, or any fabrication, and an attempt to insinuate that illegal activity took place while we were following the state statute by the rules and by, uh, by rules that govern what we can do in executive session. We were told in that executive session by our city attorney that we were following the state rules. You disagreed with that. You have that right. We voted to stop the recording. You did, and, and that, and that took place, and that recording was stopped. Receiving, receiving legal advice from our city attorney does not, there, there are certain options where that does not have to be recorded, not recorded under state law, and that is what we were following, and I just want to reiterate that every single individual in the room, with the exception of yourself, felt that when you came back out into the room and gave those statements, they were inappropriate and they were wrong. And that is exactly why this issue is in front of us today, this century of you.
For no discussion? Okay, no discussion.
I'm gonna vote on eleven point one with you. Let me, Councilor Yussa.
Yes.
May I approach my asking?
Yes.
Councilor Luttrell?
Yes.
Councilor Rosman. Next item is eleven point two, Resolution, uh, Resolution R. two thousand twenty-five zero zero twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and police chief to execute in a governmental government agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing and city of Durango sentenced offenders at the Archuleta County Detention Center.
Very good. Counsel, one second. This is the top of the presentation. Uh, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Uh, what we have in front of you is a resolution authorizing the mayor and police chief to execute in a governmental agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing of city of Durango sentenced offenders at the Archuleta County Detention Center. Uh, I would also point out that we do have our Police Chief, Bryce Current, our Assistant City Manager, Bob Bremer, um, as well as our city attorney, Mark Morgan, uh, who we all worked on together on this, along with the Judge Matt Hardeston, uh, in trying to come up with some solutions in regards to our sentenced municipal sentenced offenders. Uh, what you have right here in front of you is just a summary of the intergovernmental agreement negotiations. I think for most of us, it's been in the paper enough that we don't really have to go line item by line item on it, uh, but those just show that this, uh, part of our jail services started in August. Uh, we kind of went through it in November, trying to work it out, looking for a ninety-day extension. Uh, ultimately, the jail IGA was canceled, uh, from the county with thirty days' notice. Uh, we did think that we had in December an effort to, after having multiple meetings, an effort to have a proposed jail IGA service, jail services IGA for the council to approve at the January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting. We were notified that that would appear to be overly ambitious, uh, therefore, we had a look at other avenues, uh, going. In February twenty twenty-five, specifically in February tenth, city staff did meet with the Archuleta County staff at the sheriff's office, as well as the Archuleta County Attorney, uh, to discuss a proposed agreement. Uh, they did forward us a proposed agreement on February twenty-sixth, uh, that we were okay with operationally and Mark was okay with legally. Uh, therefore, we have a proposed IGA for the council to, um, vote on. Just a little bit about what this actually does. Uh, the housing agreement, the Archuleta Sheriff retains discretion based on security, medical needs, and facility capacities of the county sheriff of Archuleta does have that discretion. This would only be for municipal sentenced inmates only. Uh, this would not include our failure to appear warrants. Those would be continued to be handled by our police department. Uh, we are doing those, uh, as we see, also with the holding cells that we have in the, uh, police department as well as our experience if necessary. Uh, the failure to appear is usually what causes the most of the collection that we had seen in regards to the usage of the La Plata County Jail. Uh, those parts now are gonna be taken, uh, for us. We will provide transportation for inmates to Archuleta County Jail and back to Durango after the sentence is completed. Uh, the financial terms, that's a mistake, sorry about that, too. It was a hundred and ten is the daily rate per inmate at Archuleta County, it's not a hundred. It's adjustable annually. This does include meal, security, routine medical care. Anything outside of that, we would be bill for, which is calling, uh, if there's something that's a little bit more complex than what's routine. Uh, the monthly billing with thirty-day payment requirements. Uh, it is a two-year term with an optional two-year renewal, and either party may terminate with fourteen days' notice. Uh, the one thing to put up on this is, it still does have to go to the Archuleta County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, we would be the first one to sign it, uh, which is usually customary in having the last party, uh, being the one that signs it to completely, uh, completely execute an IGA. Estimated cost savings, uh, so just to kind of talk a little bit of what we actually used municipal offenders, uh, last year, working with Chief Current and the judge, they were able to say that we actually had a total of ten inmates, uh, presented to the last calendar year for a total of eighty-one days. La Plata County proposed a rate of one ninety-eight and wait, uh, which would be total about sixteen thousand, uh, if we use the proposed agreement, which La Plata County was proposing in the rate. With the Archuleta County proposed rate of a hundred and ten, that would actually total eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, uh, looking at, um, the transportation costs, ten round trips back and forth would be about two thousand two hundred and eight miles if we just use the IRS standard mileage rate. At seventy cents per mile, it's a transportation cost of about fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars. Even with that added on, you can still see that the cost for Archuleta County, uh, is still significantly less for us. With that being said, the staff recommends the city council move to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and police chief to execute in a governmental agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing of city of Durango municipal sentenced offenders at the Archuleta County Detention Center. Move to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and police chief to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Archuleta County regarding the housing of city of Durango municipal sentenced offenders at the Archuleta County Detention Center.
Second.
I have a small question on this resolution and the agreements. Is this an agreement that can be terminated, uh, immediately? Um, let's say a new city council is in place, and within the day, we have an agreement with La Plata County, um, on the jail services. Would we be stuck with a two-year agreement, or can we cancel it without penalty, without...
Putting you back on the, uh, slide four, which I have in the public, so they can see in their term of termination, uh, it does happen, either party may terminate with fourteen days' notice.
Well, I might, I guess I might make a couple of comments. I guess I just want to say that I think an agreement with Archuleta County provides a reliable alternative, um, for the city of Durango to house Durango municipal offenders that allows us to continue to enforce our specialty court program, which has proven to be very successful in protecting the quality of life of our Durango residents and helping sure that our most vulnerable get the help and assistance that they need. This program has proven to be very efficient and effective for our community and one, um, which the city definitely wants to continue, and that was why we were so truly disappointed and devastated when La Plata County stopped, suggested saying that they would no longer accept our low-level municipal offenders. I think it is really wonderful that we have such strong relationships with our neighboring communities that are willing to step up and help the city during a time of need, and I want to thank Archuleta County in advance for their willingness to engage in these conversations so quickly and providing us with options to continue our programs. Our specialty court program in Durango is very important and helpful, and that is why it's truly devastating to hear the county and the sheriff here in our own community would no longer accept these low-level municipal offenders. So I just think it's a wonderful alternative for us, and I want to thank our city manager for working so hard in getting this agreement to be forward. So, thank you.
Definitely, Tina. I want to make sure Bryce, uh, he has a lot of kudos on that. He has established a really good relationship with the Archuleta County Sheriff, and was a pivotal part in making that happen, so I want to make sure Bryce gets credit for that.
Yes, thank you as well, Bryce. Really important, and again, such an important program for our entire community and for the residents. So I think, um, I want to thank you guys a lot for this effort, and thank Archuleta County for their consideration.
Thank you, Melissa, for stating all those reasons. You know, I'm really satisfied with this resolution also because we're working with our partners, partners in southwestern Colorado, and I'm thankful that Archuleta County is willing to step up and give us hand at this point. Because our municipal offenders are getting the help they need. We're not throwing them in jail, we're getting the services through the board, and through whatever that community provides. I'm favored, this is important, this is what we're doing. Okay, you know? You got it, Mark?
Well, I, shall I? I, you know, I'm critical and analytical, I'm just gonna throw this out there. This is not a solution, this is a match. The numbers we are seeing, savings, it's not savings, you can, ten trips for, it wasn't ten trips for eighty, eighty days, I think eighty days of, uh, presence, ten trips. It's a great favorite flyer for you, I was just asking you, I'm sorry. Ten, ten round trips, so if I have a police officer that does a round trip to pick him up and a round trip to drop him off, I assume that, that takes two round trips. We already doubled it, the time for staff, I, I can go on and on, this, this is so misleading. But I do, will, I will support this resolution because we have been, you know, we have chosen pathways as a council that gives us no other option. So that's why I will support it, but, oh my gosh.
I would just suggest, if I can in response, that I don't think it's misleading. The numbers here are very clear to me. Um, we're not doing this to save money. We're doing this to continue the programs that we currently have in place. This is the option that is in front of us because we are not able to do it with La Plata County at this time.
How's it say that? Not just about cost savings also, um, to your point earlier, it's about quality of life. It's about quality of life for everybody in our community, not just, um, the people that pay property taxes, but also the people that don't necessarily have access to services. And so being able to continue, um, the services or our specialty court, I think is incredibly important. Um, we were able to get Judge Hardeston into his correct, uh, role as municipal judge, um, what a game changer, just a very short period. He's been a really great substantive change, that have really moved the needle about how we are addressing a need in our community. So, um, I agree, I think this is a quality of life for, for these folks that may not know, may not have access, may not have the ability to reach out to these resources, and now we have a mechanism and an inflection point to be able to introduce them to resources. Um, that's the critical point, I think, for me, is that it's not just cost savings, it's not misleading. I really feel like we can continue the good work that, that Judge Hardeston has incorporated again, just a very short period, and to really, um, continue to push the envelope about how we addressing, how we are addressing this critical need in our community.
I just have one thing that just you guys haven't said yet. This resolution, every example we lost a case, we've lost a case, we lose a case. We had a preliminary hearing, we were negotiating with Archuleta County at the time. We dismissed our case because this solution was on the table. So if this passes, not only does it, um, solve a problem in municipal court, it completely alleviates the need to go through that litigation. We didn't lose, we dismissed it, we dismissed it without prejudice, we can bring it back in if we chose to, but this is an alternate solution that we discussed partially in the executive session to the litigation. So, um, that one hadn't been made yet, I just want to make sure that we're going through that.
Thank you, Mark. Can we get a vote?
Mayor President, House?
Yes.
Councilor Luttrell?
Yes.
Councilor Yussa?
Yes.
Councilor Ross?
Yes.
And as I said on the agenda, assigned to twelve point one, first consideration of an ordinance establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a prosperity officer, and creating divisions of economic opportunity, innovating housing solutions, and destination marketing and management with my permission.
Good evening, Mayor Potem, Council. My French prosperity officer, here to discuss information regarding first consideration of ordinance, establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a prosperity officer, and creating divisions of economic opportunity, innovative housing solutions, and destination marketing and management, all pursuant to the Durango Charter, Article Two, Section Eleven, Paragraph A. The collective mission of housing tourism and economic opportunity strongly aligns with the city vision of a multi-generational community which is authentic, diverse, engaged, thriving, and environmentally responsible. And that collective mission is to enhance the quality of life of the residents and celebrate a multi-generational community by promoting equitable access to attainable housing, fostering inclusive economic growth, and elevating the city as a vibrant destination. If I look at all three of these specific divisions, these specific disciplines, each one of them strongly aligns with the city vision. And I'm not gonna go through these nine points that I extracted that, that really represent the alignment of the vision, uh, but the emphasis here is that in today's landscape, in a post-candidemic economy, all three of these are, are really interdependent, they can no longer be looked at independently to, to be extremely successful. This is best represented by this Venn diagram. If we look at the objective economic opportunity, which is business and job growth, the objective innovative housing solutions, which is workforce housing and affordability, and the objective of destination marketing and management, which is sustainable tourism, these are all highly interdependent. That means that housing is an economic factor, tourism is one-third of our workforce, and, we got the cut off on the bottom of the slide. There is collaboration, efficiency, and economies of scale in all three of these. There is collaboration in efficiency and economies of scale in all three of these. This enables collaboration of, of all the entities that are no longer dependent. Efficiency is in how we use common platforms and process. And economies of scale, fiscal asset operations, access data, data analytics, metrics, and operations. As an example of what the, uh, what the organization flow chart, I'm sorry, work chart would look like, we've diagrammed this and color-coded it. In the dark green is destination marketing management. Uh, the light green is innovative housing solutions. And in the gray is economic opportunity. At this time, staff would like to make a recommendation to move to approve the first consideration of ordinance establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a Prosperity Officer, and creating divisions of economic opportunity, innovative housing solutions, and destination marketing and management, all pursuant to the Durango Charter Article Two, Section eleven, Paragraph A. I move to approve an introduction of an ordinance establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, Prosperity Officer. Sorry, this is a consideration, consideration, yeah. Oh, first consideration. I'm going to get this right at some point today. I move to approve a first consideration of an ordinance establishing the Durango Prosperity Office, appointing a Prosperity Officer, and creating divisions of economic opportunity, innovative housing solutions, and destination marketing and management, all pursuant to the Durango Charter Article Two, Section two, paragraph A.
One second.
I just want, yeah, sure, I just want to say, um, I've had the fortune of knowing Mike for a really long time, and knowing your capacity at the United Development Alliance, um, really to be able to leverage your skill set, broad, very broad skill set, and be able to take that into the city. Um, I'm, I'm very excited to see where we can take this, um, this office and to really create tangible results for the, for the community and constituents. So, um, really happy that this is going to be considered today and moving forward hopefully to get this through the House. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm agreeing. It's been really great having you a part of the city primary leadership team. And it's nice to see, um, what the recommendations that you're bringing forward. I think they're going to be, uh, they seem like very efficient and effective means of addressing some of our key priorities in our community and for the City of Durango that we've been really striving to reach for quite a long time. So I do too, as well. I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of this, um, if this is further approved. And thank you so much.
Thank you.